Welcome to our Monday, October 18th School Board meeting. If you'd please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome everyone to this evening's School Board meeting. On behalf of the Board, I want to share that we are glad to be back in person this evening. We want to first remind everyone that our current policy regarding masks is that they be worn at all times when we're conducting our public meetings. If you're not willing to wear a mask, we ask that you politely leave now and watch a streamed version of the meeting. There are extra masks if you need one outside the door on the table. After we recognize some outstanding achievements of students and staff, we have some timely business to take care of, after which we have set aside time for public comment. I want to remind our attendees and home viewers that at the end of our meeting, we accept comments on any topic, so in many cases, we are not prepared to respond on the spot to questions or concerns. Thank you for listening, and let's move on to the presentation of tonight's agenda. So we'll go to Dr. Baracco for the Agenda Approval Deletions Editions.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. You do have a revised agenda at your workstation. We added the recognition of an executive session that was held last week, as well as a new professional leave request from Dr. Bracy under Roman numeral seven C.
Still move to accept his recommendation.
We have a motion by Dr. Malco.
Second.
Second by Dr. Medlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Marshall, is there any correspondence this evening?
There is no official correspondence to report on, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our Liaison Committee updates. Mr. Marshall.
At this point, there's been no activity. Again, nothing to report.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly.
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Medlin.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Dr. Malco.
Oh, yes. We are here tonight to honor some of our staff, teachers that have received the Lake Central grants, so that will be happening soon. And I want to remind everyone that on Saturday morning, November 6th, with a starting time of nine o'clock at The Wedge, which is Door K, we will start with our 5K Lake Central Education Sponsored Walk or Run. You can walk it or you can run it. Some of the monies will be given towards a grant submitted by teachers in the future in honor of Dana Les. The purpose of those grants would be more than likely integration of science, math, technology, all those things that work together to make our brains sharp. So again, it's a fundraiser for the Education Foundation, but from that will come growth and advantages in the classroom in honor of a young former Lake Central student that we tragically lost several years ago. So that is November 6th, 9:00 a.m. Even if you just want to come and cheer us on, that would be great. And I hear we might have a special guest, is that right, Dr. Baracco?
I'm sorry, what?
I hear we might have a special guest, is that right?
I'm unaware of that.
Oh. I think you're it. You're the special guest. They're special to us. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, and I have nothing either this evening. So with that, we'll move on to our official School Board Business Topics Consent Agenda. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you again. Seek Board Approval for the minutes from our regular meeting that was held virtually on October 4th and our executive session from last October 14th, as well as approval of the claims, payroll, and extracurricular expenditures that are contained in your Board packets.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Marshall.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kelly. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We have no public comments for action items, so we'll move on to our official School Board Business Topics Regular Agenda. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you once more. We are happy this evening to recognize a couple of staff members who were recognized on a statewide level for their outstanding performance. We'll begin by inviting Mr. Graber from Clark forward to talk about one of his staff members.
Good evening, Board and meeting's office. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize Mrs. Karen Bowman. She's been a counselor not only at Taylor Middle School, but then at Lake Central High School, as well as at Clark Middle School. Karen has been the recipient of the Indiana School Counselors Association Middle School Counselor of the Year, and so Karen Black should be going down to receive her award in November, at which point in time she will be one of three finalists for the State Counselor of the Year. So if you could please congratulate them. Welcome.
Hi, my wonderful husband, Kate Bowman. I've just really enjoyed serving the students, tenants, and community of Lake Central. I've worked in Lake Central schools since 1993, and I just think so many of the things happen over here, I really love the spirit of this corporation, and I'll continue to serve our community.
Mrs. Bowman, Mr. Graber, can we get a picture, please? You'll have to scoot back a little, please. Thank you. Can you move over towards the middle? A little more, a little more.
She's so bossy.
I know. All right, that's two parts, but it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And I just want to mention to the Board that Mr. Graber did a nice job having his staff at a supposed staff meeting recognize Karen for her success and recognition. So thank you for doing that, Mr. Graber. Next up is Erin Novak, Principal of Lake Central High School, who is going to also share information about one of our assistant principals.
Dr. Baracco, members of the Board, Central Office Administrators, members of the community, it's my honor to talk about my coworker, my colleague, my friend, Mr. Richard Moore. He serves as our Associate Principal at Lake Central High School, and I wrote something because I didn't want to forget anything on his wonderful behalf. So if you don't mind, I will read this. Lake Central High School is very proud to recognize Mr. Richard Moore on being named the 2022 Indiana Administrator of the Year through the Indiana School Counselor Association. Mr. Moore is always willing to go above and beyond to work with the counselors at Lake Central High School. He is knowledgeable in all facets of our course offerings, programs, and is always an advocate for student success, no matter what path they pursue after graduation. Most importantly, Mr. Moore's calm demeanor and the ability to help students and staff work through problems and times of crises is one of his finest attributes. The students and staff are lucky to work alongside Mr. Moore and value his commitment to our school and his acceptance of this outstanding award. Congratulations, Mr. Moore.
I need a picture. If you're going to say something, please.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity, being a teacher, coach, dean, and now an administrator here at Lake Central, all the faculty and staff, past and present that have helped molded me into what I have become. So this award's really for all of you and all the counselors, just I try to be a good listener, just as they are, they've mentored me and are helping me with that, so thank you, everyone.
Can I get a picture? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Richard, can I ask you a quick question? Like the Chicago sky yesterday, the question to ask is what do you attribute your success to?
Point question, I'll try to give you the bigger digest version. It's family, friends, and I attribute a lot to the leadership, to become a servant leader, and to being a very good listener.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce Dr. Bracy, who is going to make our third presentation of the evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Baracco, President Seuss, Board members in our Lake Central community. I am pleased to have the opportunity to honor someone very special to our community. COVID has affected a multitude of families across the nation, but right here at home, we have families who are in need of support. Our schools are fortunate to have partnered with Bonnie Meyer from the Community Help Network Incorporated. They sponsor...
Sorry. Sorry.
Premature, Mommy.
She's not shy. They sponsor the Buddy Bag Program, which provides food to many of our families on a regular basis. A Buddy Bag contains breakfast, lunch, dinner, and a snack for two days. The food is delivered to schools weekly, and even during longer breaks from school, the Buddy Bag Program often provides even more meals for our families. Thanks to Dr. Malco for introducing us to Bonnie Meyer, we'd like to honor Bonnie for touching the lives of our students across the Lake Central schools. Bonnie, we salute you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Janice. Everybody's taller than me, have you noticed that?
Go ahead.
I said, everybody's taller than me, have you noticed that?
Thank you very much. We don't expect to ever be recognized, that's not what we do this for. We know that there's a need, and we try to meet that need. We just are trying to be the hands and feet of Jesus and feeding hungry kids. We started the program at the Crown Point First United Methodist Church in 2017 with one school and 139 kids, and thanks to Mrs. Malco, we now are in four school districts and 15 schools, serving over 600 students. And we're happy to do it, and we just foresee continued growth. And if you want to know more, Community Help Network is on Facebook, our website is communityhelpnet.org. Check us out, we're always looking for more community support, especially in the Lake Central District, which is a new community for us to serve. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I could ask you a question, Ms. Bonnie?
Oh, it's not a math question, is it?
But you mentioned the Methodist Church of Crown Point, that you're not teaching...
It has something to do with the church, your food. You're not teaching the principles of the Bible or anything, correct? No, no. We started out as ministry of the church, and we got too big for the church. We were on a stage about this size, and you can imagine trying to put together 400 bags of food on an area this small, just was not going to continue to work. So we started the Community Help Network in April of 2020 to encompass the Buddy Bag Program and other programs, such as our Household Pantry. And we've been blessed to have space now at the old Ark Building in Crown Point, across from the Crown Point High School. We have half of the warehouse, which is a huge amount of space. It's an incredible blessing, so much was already in place for us, shelving, tables, and whatnot, so we are there, filling up the space rapidly as we grow. And though personally, those are our beliefs, we don't... The inspirational notes that we put every week in the bag are just that, an inspirational note. I think this week's was, "When you learn to love yourself, you show others how to love you." Things like that. Very good, very good. Very good, very good.
Next, I'd like to introduce Melody Wolfe and Louise Talent, who I believe are going to present the Lake Central Education Foundation Round 55 Grant Recipients.
Good evening, Board, nice to see you again.
Melody, did you use the microphone, please?
I thought I had a big enough mouth. Okay. Thank you. This is the Lake Central Education Grant Round 55. We have with us Mike Selgin and Zach, which are on the Board. This time, we awarded four grants for the amount of $1,761.56. That money affects approximately 1,087 students throughout this grant. So far cumulative, we have given 604 grants with a total of $305,125.57. So, that's... The run on the six will greatly help with raising grants for teachers. The first one that we have is Elizabeth Schultz, she's from Holman. Her grant is Going After Your Goals, it was for $343.36. Her goal was soccer is a great way to work on balance, teamwork, footwork, spatial awareness, and so much more. So, thank you for enabling Holman students to have updated safety equipment in which to thoroughly enjoy the sport.
Okay, this always happens. Forward. At work. Okay. There we go. Board and representatives from the community administration from Lake Central and also from our administrators here, thank you so much for your support. Always for the Lake Central Education Foundation, without all of you, we wouldn't be able to accomplish the great things that Melody mentioned. We have tonight also presenting to Allison Castle, award for $498 in this grant round, which is Round 55. Allison plans to add and update her classroom library. With the money provided, her with the use of book clubs and the First Chapter Fridays to fit the needs of her current and future students, which in turn will foster independent readers who are successful in all aspects of life. Great team there, Mr. Graber, they have some wonderful things going on there. Also to follow along with, at Clark Middle School, we have Lori Razin. And Lori has received $500, right on the money, in this grant round. And the funds for her project are to Project Lit. She has received special training in order to start a chapter of Project Lit. And she will be able to use these funds for books and materials for activities also at Clark. So, congratulations.
And the last grant we have is Ashley Custalink, she's from Watson, for $420. Hers does with adaptable balls, for PE. Creating confidence, speaking creative, thinking, and decision-making through the use of a variety of adaptable balls during elementary physical education activities. So, students that have special needs get to choose the balls that they want, and this was a big thing for some of us on the Board, like, we're stepping into other realms and not just giving, you know, you know exactly what I mean, guys. So, I really applaud her for that. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and thank you for everybody else and all of that.
Mrs. Talent, can I get a picture of you, please? Yeah, right?
While they're posing, I would say to you that they're all volunteers. They give so many hours to this program. So, again, if anybody would like to join Education Foundation, we're looking for volunteers. And Mr. Selgin, and then our student member is Zach Selgin. Yes, right, right, right. So, thank you for all that work you do, it's beyond amazing.
Okay, my final agenda item this evening is to seek Board approval for the collective bargaining agreement with teachers for administrative and classified pay raises.
I'll make a motion to approve that. We have a motion by Mrs. Kelly?
Second.
Second by Dr. Medlin, any discussion? Hearing none?
We have to say something, because this is, I mean, it's phenomenal, and I think I made that comment at the last Board meeting, all those years and all those times that we would drive to Indianapolis, or make phone calls, or write letters. All those years, it finally came to a point where they, meaning the legislature, gave us some extra money. But beyond that, in addition to that, it was the individuals in our community and our referendum committee that were out walking the streets, getting some extra money. And it makes Lake Central competitive then with the area school districts, specifically Crown Point and Munster. So, all those years of that hard work, it finally paid off. So, it's a congratulations to everybody involved with it, and thanks for not letting it go, and thanks for keeping focused on that, because it would be easy to say, oh, I give up. But you didn't, so that's a good thing, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Now, we'll move on to our Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Moucha.
Thank you very much. I have a packet for personnel for your approval, but I do want to draw to your attention three retirements, because they certainly have given a lot of years to our school. Pam Hoffmaster with 24 years, Mickey Zolvoff with 24 years, and Cindy Fort with 37 years of service to the Lake Central children. So, congratulations to those.
Mrs. Moucha, did we have a bus driver with 20 years, I think, didn't we?
Well, we do, I did not say that, I'm sorry. Carolyn Reddy with 20 years of service also.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Malkow? Second by Mr. Marshall, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Move on to our Director of Primary Education, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening, I'm coming back before you tonight, seeking your approval for the professional leave request you have received in your packets.
We have a motion by Mr. Marshall, second by Mrs. Kelly, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Who will, oh, I'm sorry, hello, Mrs. Castaneda. Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Castaneda.
Thank you, I'm seeking your approval for the professional leave request that was in your Board packet for this evening.
I move to approve the professional leave requests.
We have a motion by Dr. Medlin?
Second.
Second by Dr. Malkow, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gramala, Director of Student Services.
I'm also seeking your approval for the professional leave requests that were included in your packet.
Motion to approve. We have a motion by Mrs. Kelly?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall, any discussion?
Sounds like an interesting conference.
Yeah, yes, definitely.
I can't wait to hear more about it.
I can ask the occupational therapist to share some information afterwards.
Thank you.
All right, here, any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move right on to our Director of Business Services, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Suze. We are now at the completion of the budget adoption process. And so, the first resolution in your Board packet is to seek your approval on the advertised 2022 budget adoption, it's the budget appropriations and advertised tax rates. So, I seek your approval on that.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Kelly?
Second.
Second by Dr. Medlin, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next resolution is to approve the 2022 Capital Projects Plan, as has been previously presented, so I seek your approval on that.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Marshall? Second by Dr. Malkow, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. My third item is to seek your approval for the 2022 School Bus Replacement Plan that has been previously advertised.
Also moved to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Marshall?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kelly, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. The next resolution is to approve the 2022 transfer of funds from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund. And just a little background information here, in 2017, the funding formula and accounting changed, and funds that used to be, or expenditures that used to be charged to our old General Fund are now in this new Operations Fund. However, all of the tuition support we receive from the state still initially gets reseeded into the Education Fund, and then we need to transfer monies into the Operations Fund. The state doesn't want you to transfer more than 15%, and we've been always right around that 8% amount, because we want to keep as much money in the Education Fund as possible. So, this resolution authorizes us to transfer $5.4 million throughout the course of 2022. I will do that evenly over the 12-month period. And again, this is approximately 8% of our revenue into the Education Fund from the tuition support. So, I seek your approval on that resolution.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Marshall? Second. Second by Dr. Malkow, any discussion?
So, Mr. James, why does the state have it set up that way? That it goes into one account and then it transfers out? Is there a reason? Is it, will it be, do you anticipate it'll change, or?
No, it won't change, because every school district is different. And you'll have some districts who have to get hit with circuit breaker impact a lot, so their revenue into the Operations Fund is less, so therefore, they have to transfer more money in. And it leaves more local control to people in my position and the school board to determine, you know, how much is needed to move. The reason why they kind of changed the whole structure in the first place was actually to give schools more flexibility. Prior to 2017, we used to have a Capital Projects Fund, we used to have a separate Transportation Fund, we used to have a separate Bus Replacement Fund. So, in essence, four years ago, they combined those all into one, so we can have more flexibility to say, hey, you know, we're running one with our buses now, we don't have to buy as many, we can use them for other needs. Again, more local control. So, that's why they kind of came up with the new funding system, or the funds that they set up. But they, since statute says all the money goes into the General slash Education Fund, they didn't want to mess with that, because again, each school district is different with their needs. So, I don't anticipate it really changing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. My next item is to seek your approval for our semi-annual application to the Common School Loan Fund. That application came out at the end of last week. We use this money to bring in, or use these funds to update and keep current with all of our technology in our classrooms, mainly paying for smartboards, Chromebooks, and iPads for our students and staff. So, when, at the time, when the Board packet went out, our, the most we could apply for is $100 per the ADM. At that point, it was looking at, we were like at $9,225. Since then, we finalized and certified, we're at $9,226. So, the amount that I will, upon your approval, if you approve, would be to apply for $922,600, which is very consistent with where we are every six months. And just so the Board knows, this is a five-year repayment on the loan, at 1% interest. And we've been doing these every six months for the last 10 years. So, as soon as one comes off, the new one comes on, so it's tax neutral to our taxpayers. And it's a good funding mechanism to keep current with the technology in our rooms. So, seek your approval on that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dr. Malkow? Second by Mrs. Kelly, any discussion?
You know, Mr. James, I think I shared this with you already, but I was attending a ISBA-sponsored budget seminar, and I was amazed at the number of school corporations that did not even know this existed. So, thanks for being on the cutting edge and using it to our advantage. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. My next item is to seek your approval for the donations that were presented in the Board packet.
Motion to approve. We have a motion by Mrs. Kelly?
Second.
Second by Dr. Medlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And my final item was just to give the Board an update on our ADM count. I kind of told you just a second ago, that our final count for the fall of 2021 is 9,226 students. That is up 60 students from last year. We saw gains of our 12 grades, in essence, it's hard to compare kindergarten to kindergarten, but in essence, we have more kids in every cohort grade level this year than we did last year, except for one class. So, more kids are coming back, and more kids, our families are moving into the area. We're doing good things here. So, we're fortunate for the increase of the 60 kids. In your Board packet, there's the breakdown by school and by grade. It was Bibich who had the one extra student that we were able to fight for and be able to claim on the count. So, any questions on the ADM count? Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. So, now we'll move on to our public comments. I just want to remind all guest speakers that public comments are limited to three minutes per person, 30 minutes total. When we are at the 30-minute mark, I'll ask the Board if it would like to extend the public comments portion. If we choose to extend the public comments section, but then begin to hear repeated messages and comments, we as a Board reserve the right to end the public comment portion. If the Board wishes to continue, we'll do this for each 30-minute mark. Thank you. So, our first person who signed up is Nicole Jones. And if you'd please state your name and your address prior to speaking, please.
Hi, I'm Nicole Jones, I teach at Grimmer Middle School, 7440 Jeffrey Street, Sherrville.
Thank you.
I am here tonight to speak out about the issue of censoring the books our students are reading. I was notified on Friday that at the last minute, classroom novels needed to be pulled from Advanced 8th Grade due to some parent concerns in another building. According to Ray Bradbury in his famous novel Fahrenheit 451, "People fear books because they quote 'show the pores in the face of life.' The comfortable people want only wax moon faces, poreless, hairless, expressionless." I am here to urge our community, to encourage our youth, to absolutely read and discuss literature that shows us the pores in the face of life. I, along with my fellow 8th Grade Advanced teachers in this district, were notified a couple of years ago that due to rising national tensions, we were to pull Mark Twain's The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn from our curriculum. Despite the fact that it can hurt the heart of a lover of literature to not share a classic with our students, we decided to face this challenge head-on and research and read a slew of modern young adult novels that our students could read in its place. We wanted to incorporate coming-of-age novels that both represented our student body, but also allowed them to read about characters and backgrounds that may be different from their own. We took to our task with vigor, spending our summers off for the last few years reading and researching to have this unit ready for our students. The unit took the form of a literature circle, in which groups of students choose from a list of novels and read and discuss them with their peers. You can think of this as a guided book club. I want to reiterate that this unit was written as a part of a group effort and that no individual teacher chose these novels alone. My 8th Grade Advanced colleagues and I have been privileged to be treated as trusted professionals by our curriculum director. Please be assured that not only are we all licensed teachers, we all three hold high-ability licenses within the state of Indiana, as well as master's degrees in education. In other words, we are highly qualified teachers. I am so blessed to be at Grimmer Middle School, where I have both supportive parents and open-minded students. I truly believe that advanced kids at this age are mature enough to handle young adult novels that reference subjects that may be considered taboo in lower-grade levels, even other academic levels. On Friday, I received word that the aforementioned few parents were pulling excerpts out of context from our novels and rallying to have these books banned from our curriculum. As of now, these few parents have succeeded. My questions to the Board and to the remaining parents are, when will this stop? When will we stop allowing a select... When will we stop allowing a select few of vocal adults to speak for all of the parents in this district? And lastly, how can we encourage our students to think freely and critically if we as instructors are constantly met with opposition that discourages outside experiences and free thinking? I myself am a parent of an 8th Grade Advanced student myself, and especially as a parent, this is infuriating. I trust that my daughter's teachers are professionals and experts in their fields. I trust that they will not have her in class reading Fifty Shades of Grey. I trust that the chosen novels have been selected because they are worthwhile in the eyes of the professionals, her teachers.
I have to ask you to stop, please.
Thank you. I do ask that the parents and the rest of our community become aware that this is happening in our school district and speak out against books and.
Jenna Ogro, I'm sorry, I'm going to try to say it, Ogrosovich? Please state your name and address.
Um, Jenna Ogrosovich, Dyer, Indiana.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm standing here before you tonight as a humble mother, wife, and concerned patriot. I see before me a school board and a superintendent who are behaving as authoritarians and worse, behaving as authoritarians playing the victim, clinging to their failed attack on the worldview of every reasonable person in this room. Perhaps you'll listen to that and think I'm being too dramatic, but maybe it hurts your feelings because you don't identify as a tyrant. But it's not my job to consider your feelings. It's my job to protect my children from dangerous ideologies, such as the ideology of safety at all costs. Consider the fact of the extremely high survival rate of this virus, no longer a mysterious respiratory infection from Wuhan, China, whose uncertainty warrants the shuttering of economies for 15 days to protect hospitals from being overrun. No, what we have currently is a highly recognizable, treatable, and survivable disease. I've heard that Dr. Malco understands this. What will it take for the rest of you to come to your senses and see that you might appear as gaslighting us and shifting goalposts, as authoritarians have been known to do? Tyrants do worship power, and if you don't wish to be recognized as a tyrant, recognize the time for authoritarian COVID policymaking has ended. Consider the fact that the governor and every county board of commissioners in the state has recognized that the world is safe enough to return COVID policymaking to the local level. If any of you have political goals, it might be wise to follow suit. Local is the key word. The buck is not supposed to stop with the school boards. The final locality is the family and the sovereign adults within. I know you understand this because in late June, you've sent parents a survey. Had you listened to the overwhelming majority, you would have heard the same message being sent. Return the power to parents. I know Dr. Vrako has tried to discredit the survey, but it is statistically significant and sound, as statisticians have verified. Yet, instead of adjusting your policy, you persist in using threats against citizens you were elected to represent. Despite being freed by the Indiana Department of Health from implementing mandates, your decision is to force a filthy rag on every kid's face. It's a choice to cling to control, and we all see it. There's no legal basis to claim that you are required to mandate masks to end quarantines. The authorities above you have made it clear, return the power to us. To do otherwise is authoritarian, tyrannical, and regardless of how you feel about that, I will not stop using words that accurately describe reality. Thank you.
Margaret Jablonsky?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Jablonsky, and I live on Matthew Street in Crown Point. I would like to start by stating how glad I am that you have done away with quarantine in close contacts if they were masked. It was a step in the right direction, even though I don't believe it was something initiated by the school board. But it is now time to work on that mask part. I am sure that you too have been watching the neighboring schools, their policies and COVID statistics. Did it not strike you as fascinating that until the governor's change in the quarantine orders, the number of positive cases at Lake Central was nearly identical to Crown Point despite differing mask mandates? I know that you are aware of the mask optional policy at the Griffith Schools. Do you suppose that they care less about their students and staff health and safety? Or do they just have better lawyers advising them? I'm sure you are also managing multiple lawsuits that are being filed against various school districts. It brings about questionable efficacy, sensibility, and practicality of forcing, rather than encouraging everyone to wear masks, does it not? It also prompts me to ask a few questions, again, to which I have not yet received responses. How many of the positive cases in the Lake Central zip codes required hospitalization? How many of the positive cases resulted in deaths? What are the rates of hospitalization and death for the pediatric population in our area? How many of the quarantined close contacts developed symptomatic illness? And how many were quarantined unnecessarily, depriving them of in-person learning? Since the world seemed fixated on the raging Delta variant, how many of our positive cases were laboratory confirmed Delta variant cases? How many elderly, frail, immunocompromised students and staff do you expect in your facilities daily? How does this virus differentiate between the bus, classroom, cafeteria, friend's birthday party, or a football game? I also listened to the September Health Department webcast and was very taken aback by phrases such as deploying strike teams, tactics of identifying misinformation, mobile units. Does that sound like the verbiage of a department tasked with our well-being? Or more like a department readying for war? That, combined with the nationwide propaganda-filled coercive and forceful push for everyone to get vaccinated, raises multiple red flags. If you don't see it that way, then in my opinion, you lack critical thinking skills to make decisions for my kids. If the Health Department appears to be less than transparent and forthcoming with unbiased information, that too is a big red flag that requires those concerned with our children's health and safety to demand answers and push back. If you have not realized that school cases do not drive the community spread, but rather mirror it, then we have a serious problem on our hands, don't we? Why do you unquestioningly insist on following Health Department opinions? Notice I did not call them guidelines or recommendations because those would have to need, those would need to have to be backed by science, not propaganda. We have, what have each of you done to push back against unreasonable, unsustainable, and manipulative restrictions put in place to either make in-person learning chaotic or counterproductive, or to force vaccinations? Why do you comply when you know that throughout history, the leaders forcing their will on others were never perceived as good, as the good guys when being judged by others?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zorik Tomik?
Hello. Dear Board Members.
Could you please state your name and address?
Zorik Tomik, 10171, White Water Crossing.
Thank you.
Uh, dear Board members, I would like to address a few issues with Lake Central School Corporation. Uh, first, the website is very unwelcoming with fear tactics used in the front page. Do we need five warning signs derived as about COVID-19? Um, all other, uh, schools, school districts in Lake County have friendly websites showing happy children's faces on their front page. My Matthew toxic from tech department, warning signs requested by administration office. Uh, then, I would like to address, last year, in 2021, we lost 197 students that we drew from the district. And this year, uh, we lost 152, uh, students. So there they're going, most likely private schools, the, because they don't take away, uh, their medical rights. They don't introduce SCLO or offer inappropriate material in their libraries. So, um, last year, um, LC District lost due to students leaving and using vouchers $1.6 million, and, uh, proposed for this year expansion is $2.1 million. So taking in consideration of those facts, I can conclude that LC District will be in big financial problems in a few years, and it will lead into a decrease of corporations' quality of education. So, dear Board members, how are you going to tell your children one day that you're the reason they don't have the rights they deserve? And I just want to send a message to teachers, we as a parents, we respect you. You're very important to us, and we deeply appreciate your selfless service to the children, the future of humanity. Our hearts go out to you during these challenging times. I'm done.
Thank you. Laura Dubish?
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. Laura Dubish, 8897 Winding Trail, St. John, Indiana. You probably know it by heart by now. All right, so I gave Cindy something to give everybody. I know Dr. Vrako likes to follow the state guidance, the guidance of our state leaders. So my question back on August 26th is why is our state, you have the printed version, requiring, it's right here, from Indiana Department of Health, whenever a county's metric score rises above, whenever it's moved to a more restrictive advisory level, county must meet the metric of a less restrictive color category for two consecutive weeks to move down to a lower level. Why is LC School Corp. three weeks? I asked this question on August 26th. I emailed all of you. I think I included you, Dr. Vrako, and you said it's because the board approved it. So then I came to the board, and you said you'd take it up in a upcoming meeting. Here we are, August 26th, all the way to October 15th. It never happened. I emailed you again, Cindy, and you said you're waiting till it's an issue. We don't want to wait. We want it resolved. And why do you have to call the state to confirm? I sent you the picture. You said Dr. Vrako has to call the state. I sent it to you. It's online. We want it resolved, so when we hit the two weeks, we go down. Is that reasonable?
Terry, can you stop the clock? I'd like to respond to that.
That'd be great.
The executive order from Governor Holcomb, 2127, makes really two or three weeks moot because i-if you look at page four of that executive order, which I've sent to many people in our community already, it tells you what schools are expected to do. And the quarantine thing, you and I had this discussion last year at this time, that the quarantine thing jams us up, and we didn't have data then, nor do we have compelling data now to suggest that students who get quarantined subsequently test positive or get sick.
Well, you told me you did have that data, and that they weren't, they didn't test positive.
Well, we had, we probably had, uh, I don't remember the data exactly. There were probably six or seven clusters of kids that got quarantined last year out of probably 160 or 170 that subsequently, a handful, or six or seven of those students then were positive. So in a, in other words, in those instances, the quarantine system did what it was supposed to do. It took people out of the general population who had been infected. This year.
Dr. Vrako, you did tell me.
Your, your clock has stopped. Let me finish, and then you can speak again. This year, we've had a couple of those clusters again, okay? But now that we've gone to following executive order, 2020, 2127, uh, people who are masked, we use the three-foot limit instead of six. So we're not quarantining nearly as many people. So even if we go back to blue, if the quarantine rules stay as they are, we're in a conundrum. But I do believe, as I've told you in an email, and I've told other folks in an email, that I expect to get better guidance if we get back to low infection rates. And that's the important piece.
Well, can you clarify, what do you mean by if it gets back to blue, we're in a conundrum? Meaning we're going to have to wear masks still?
I'm, I'm suggesting that if we have to continue to quarantine people, and, you know, when you look at the, the data in the schools that were mask optional, with the number of cases they were having and the number of quarantines they were getting, okay?
I have the data. Crown Point compared to us, same.
Twice as many quarantines at least.
No, it wasn't. I have the data, and I should have.
Okay, well, I'm going to stop for now.
I have to send it to you. It was comparable. Our population's.
I was watching it too, Laura.
Our population's larger, and if you account for the difference in population, it was.
No, we have about 700 more students than they do at this time in their district.
Well, I'll send you the data tomorrow because I, I did pull that. Um, but when it happens, we want to be able to take the masks off when we're two weeks in blue. And speaking of, you said you're looking for more guidance when that happens. But again, I know a parent emailed you about, uh, why is Griffith, and they're so successful. Are you curious about that? Are you looking at their data? Because I am. If I were a board member, I would be. They're successful. And you wrote back to the parents, but they are the only public school not obeying. To the contrary, they're the, they're, first of all, public-private doesn't matter. COVID affects private students the same it does public. And I can name at least eight private schools that are also doing the same as Griffith. Second of all, Griffith, it's not that they're not following the rule. It's that they are deferring to the Constitution. They are actually, and you guys should be curious about this. What you're doing is not legal. And unfortunately, we all know a lawsuit's coming. We don't want to go that route, but it's coming. It's not legal, and it sets you up for liability because you are not following the Constitution. Griffith, I talked to the attorney of the school board. They have a fantastic attorney that knows his law. They have a fantastic superintendent. You guys need to dig because you're liable to a lot of people.
Thank you. Thank you. Ryan Majka?
Hi. Hi, I'm Ryan Mica. Uh, my address is 11440 78th Court Street, St. John. So what I want to, I want to, I have a lot of general, um, things that, uh, that have been going on in the news. Well, e-especially with the school board, and I'll name them off. I'm going to be very general. So there, I want to have a response here to controlling, uh, you know, you guys controlling the subjects at our meetings, which you, uh, guys talked about in your last meeting online. I'm going to have a response to mask invacinations, in-person meetings, and a stronger curriculum because I, I do care about our future generation of our kids and grown-up high school. It's ridiculous that we set them up to go to college and get in debt and all that stuff, but I want to get back, uh, to the other stuff. So, um, a-as far as, I, I have a lot of stuff in the Constitution. So Amendment One of the Bill writes, says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibit the free speech exercised thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievance." And so, to me logically, you guys follow under the, uh, General Assembly. And, and so it's just a ladder of what you guys fall under because you guys are voted in. And Amendment, um, 14 Bill writes, now this kind of goes to the response to the mask and the vaccinations. "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law," um, hold on, excuse me. "or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens," which is us, the people here in this school, "of the United States. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, or deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." And I, the, uh, the next two come from our state constitution. And I feel like this one goes to in-person meetings. It's Article One, Section 31. "No law shall restrain any of the inhabitants of the state from assembling together in a peaceable manner to consult for their common good, nor from instructing their representatives, nor from applying to the General Assembly for a redress of grievances." So it, it is very wrong for you to control what our subjects are and what we talk.
It's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Buckman?
Hello, uh, Robert Buckman, 7731 West 83rd Lane, Crown Point.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm here to talk today about the, the masks, the vaccines. Um, I'm here to ask you to be, you, the board members, to be selfish, and then hopefully if I make the time, I can thank you as well. Um, you'll have to forgive me, I didn't write it down last time I went over, so I'm kind of going to wing it a little bit. Um, I noticed today we started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I assume as we get towards the end of the Pledge of Allegiance, we have the board members, you know, crossing their fingers as it ends in, uh, liberty and justice for all. members, you know, crossing their fingers as it ends in liberty and justice for all. Liberty defined as the, you know, the power to do as one pleases, the power to choose, and that obviously is not the case for the students that go here. So I guess let's move into authoritarians. The Milgram Experiment has a whole bunch of scientists trying to see how far they can push the average individual, and the result of the Milgram Experiment finds that 65% of people will kill an individual if told to do so by an authority figure. So essentially, they put somebody in another room, pretended to shock them, and they would turn up the dial, okay, shock them, okay, shock them. The person would scream, they would, you know, first a little mild scream, then would get louder, louder. Eventually, the person would stop screaming, and they would say, okay, turn it up. All right, shock them again. And people would be hesitant. Well, our science, our experiment isn't going to work if we don't finish. 65% of the people finished the experiment because they were told to do so. So I suppose my question is, I would like a reasoning why the children are still wearing masks. I don't think we've really had a good answer. I assume the answer would be, well, because of the quarantine guidelines now, they don't have to quarantine. But that wasn't in place when, you know, it was voted optional, and then four days later, we pulled the rug out from under us. I don't think, I don't believe the masks are effective, at least to the extent that we believe they are. I think we see this with the new vaccine mandate. So before it comes for the children, because they're required to get some vaccines before they come to school, I assume this will be another one, I would be interested to know, in general, the percent of Lake Central staff that is vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I don't know if that's something you can give us. So quickly moving along to be selfish. Do you do a good job for our town or our community? I imagine you think you might. I hope so, but I guess my point is, we are now paying attention. When your name comes up right now, I would flip. All right, well, then I apologize. Let me just thank you then, because at least now, we're paying attention. I was one to vote every four years. I will vote more often.
Mike Kolvasovic.
Hello. Hello and good evening. My name is Mele Kovacevic, 9885 Meadow Rose Lane, St. John, Indiana, 46373. I'll be short and sweet. Last time I came here on August 16th, I read a 3M document. I tried to plead with science. They manufacture masks, and in their legal document, it says they don't protect against viruses. So I'm going to plead on something else. You guys have heard of ear, nose, and throat doctors, correct? Okay? That's because the ear, the sinuses, and the throat are all interconnected. You're wearing masks, but you're not covering your ears. You're wearing masks, but you're not covering your eyes. Do you know an infection come, can go through the eye, can go through the ear, can even caught, excuse me, can even go through your pores? Okay. I can talk about science, and I could bring back, and I could talk about laws and bills of rights and everything, but I don't think this board will listen to it. So I'm going to plead for your soul. I pray for you guys every single night. Do you know that Fauci's emails showed that he informed his close friends not to wear masks? When he falls and gets arrested, I want you guys to really think about what's going to happen to each and every one of you, okay? Because that, you're thinking short term, you're not thinking long term. Think about your family's legacy and what is going to happen. You guys are smart, okay? We're frustrated parents, we're frustrated residents because no other time in history have we ever worn masks except for 1917. And right before I left to come here, I saw something on the news. It said a San Francisco public servant was caught, just like how Biden and Jill Biden were caught in a restaurant in DC, maskless. The rule's for thee and not for me, okay? Right after that, there was 5,000 residents in San Francisco in 1918 that formed and came to a school, a skating rink the very next day. Mask mandates disappeared because the mayor was embarrassed. I want you guys to think about long term and your family's legacies. Do not embarrass yourself. May God have mercy on your souls.
Thank you. Martin Conroy.
John. I'm here regarding the mask mandate, and it's placed at LC schools. We're all aware of the reasons, the good reasons against it, so I won't go over those at this time, but I would like to talk a little bit about the interpretation of the governor's executive order and how that should affect our schools. We all recognize the IRS is the expert in tax law, but the IRS came to us one day and said we owed a huge bill. Who among us wouldn't go to an accountant or a lawyer to get a second opinion on that and fight that, see what our real interests were? There's wide disagreement in the legal interpretation and the weight of the EO. There are school districts in the state and in this area that are not masking, that are not requiring quarantine on these strict levels if they are not masking. The Attorney General and the Health Department are not going after these school districts. You have to say, what's the legal advice that's requiring us to go through with this? What's the legal advice that's requiring these other places not to? You're going to think to ourselves, how are we going to declare victory and get out of this hamster wheel so we can get these diapers off our kids' faces and out in the open where God intended them to be? It's far past time to just put this behind us, declare victory. The virus is pretty much going away. We're all, anybody who wants to be vaccinated is vaccinated at this point. Kids are not the nexus of spreading, far from it. They're the least likely population in the world to get it. Yet, we're putting burdens on them, we're putting burdens on retail worker, but basically to help. I think we ought to, you know, consider that all over this country, too, that we're bifurcating the society, and the people can walk around in stores and stadiums or whatever, while the McDonald's kids again, and, you know, mechanics and car wash people got to wear masks for god knows what reason. This is having real societal impact, real damage to our way of life here in America. We need to set the example that we're not going to live in fear, that we're going to use reason, and that we're going to listen, the people, our elected representatives, listen to us instead of hired administration, whose interpretations of the laws are possibly self-serving and possibly not well-informed. Peace be upon Dr. Varco, but we know he's given out, he's put recommendations to you to adopt stronger mask mandates than were recommended by any medical officials. We know that at a prior board meeting, he's given bad advice, incorrect advice about the board's bylaws to this board, and we know that he's put out a ridiculous email to the entire district about how to interpret survey data. That would be...
Time.
Any mask student in this district would be embarrassed and get an F for putting out.
Thank you.
We have to consider logic and how to get out of this.
So now we will move on to our board comments and consideration of future agenda items. So we will start with Mr. Board comments. Thank you. Ms. Kelly.
Yeah, just want to say congratulations again to Mrs. Bowman and Mr. Moore and our retirees.
Thank you. Dr. Malkow?
Well, yes, congratulations to, okay, Mrs. Bowman's gone, but congratulations, Mr. Moore. Mr. Graeber, I heard you ran in the Chicago Marathon again, is that correct? Good for you, and I know you did something to help children in need. Thank you for doing that. I thank you all for coming and sharing your comments tonight. I am of the attitude that I can always learn. It's kind of my mantra in life, every day I learn something, so I think that's it. I have nothing else to say, so.
Thank you. Dr. Medlin?
I look forward to getting back to talking about goals for Lake Central School Corporation. Thank you.
Oh, that would be a nice agenda topic.
Thank you. And I'm also just wanted to say that I express Cancer Awareness Month, and I believe it was the high school that the T-shirt where you can purchase at Hoosier Sports. So not only are you supporting a local business, you're also, it's a fundraiser for the high schools. So hop onto Hoosier Sports and order your shirt, and with that, I turn it over to Dr. Varco, board calendar, future activities.
Yeah, our next meeting is on Tuesday, November 2nd, due to fall break. So it is on Tuesday, November 2nd here. Thank you.
Thank you. And then can, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Can I make a motion?
I moved to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dr. Medlin.
I'd like to make a motion for the...
Do we have a second?
He's hot.
I don't think you can make a motion.
No, I ask for the board to make a motion.
No, no.
Can I ask for the board to make a motion?
I don't think so.
I would like to ask somebody on the board that has heard the facts, that has heard the statistics, to make a motion right now in good conscience for the representatives, if you have a future responsibility to make the mask optional.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment by Dr. Medlin. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?